All the meeting in order. Have everyone in attendance. Agenda review. Adjustments on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second. Been moved and seconded, accept the agenda as. All those in favor, I.
I.
Oh, me. Okay, first discussion item, resolution number ten dash twenty dash two thousand twenty.
Yeah, this is a request from the title company. So when we first went, um, when we first worked with Joe Marlock to determine whether we wanted to move forward with selling the property behind Robert Frost, the thirteen point and some odd change acres. Um, we had a, we had the minutes that were appropriate to carry on with all that and gave us the power to do that. But it's uh, got Joe Morlock's name on it. And so the title company has requested that we do an update. Uh, and so this resolution just satisfies this requirement for the title company. Um, and it gives me the authority to sign instead of Joe. So it's basically just an adjustment to that for the real estate sale. And um, this is kind of a boilerplate resolution. It has been approved by Michael Blade, the attorney that was at executive session with us that evening. While we talked about it, so.
Yeah, it looks um, it looks fine. I guess um, just one phrase caught my eye toward uh, toward the bottom. Where it says adopted by the Silver Falls School District of the city of Silverton, Oregon. It's, you know, this school district encompasses many communities. The city of Scotts Mills, many other, so I just, I just, I showed Phil, I thought maybe we should just scratch that for it, just say, adopted by the Silver Falls School District. I've worked session held, just a.
You're right, Tom, I should have caught that. I just, I just subbed to McMinnville and wherever it said Silverton.
Yeah.
Or Silverton, wherever it said McMinnville, because I borrowed this from McMinnville, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's a great idea. We will adjust that before we sign it.
And then what about the first whereas it also says?
It's probably the same.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. It's fine. It's fine. That part's fine.
Okay. Yep. So we can definitely make that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz that is actually in the, it is within the city limits. So that's why that is on the first. So we can definitely adjust that before Phil and I sign it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that.
Any uh, other discussion or questions or anything concerning the resolution? Okay. Integrated guidance.
Okay, so integrated guidance is um, coming up. So you know, every two years we redo the integrated guidance plan and that's the grant agreement uh, with the Oregon Department of Education that gives the district over three million dollars. It's really uh, valuable resource for us and I don't think we could be, you know, hanging on like we are without those funds. Um, Kim and I talk about this a lot. Uh, that, those monies come from the student investment account, which was passed by the legislature and it's just a really important fund for the district. Uh, that program requires that we do some community engagement. And so I'm just letting you know that uh, the admin team is gonna meet tomorrow. We're gonna talk about what that engagement looks like because we want it to be really authentic. And so we want, you know, engagement from staff members at all the different buildings. Um, I'd like to do a town hall at the December board meeting and invite some folks to join us uh, so that we can, probably like prior to the meeting, like the hour before. Uh, so that we can get some real feedback from the community. And so there'd be a lot of efforts uh, ongoing to do that community engagement piece. We do partner with um, Willamette E S D for some of that and they, they're our partners, so they help us uh, with all that uh, building of the plan. But what happens is we take all that feedback and then. Let me know that that's gonna be coming your way pretty soon.
Okay. And then on uh, policies on, when we're looking at policies and everything. The uh, idea of two reads versus three reads, which has been the norm that those of us here are used to.
Yeah, and you actually have in your district policy, it does say we do three readings. And we talked about um, maybe just doing two with the board because we're doing one with the policy group. So if we do three with the board, that means we've talked about it four different times. And so I didn't know if, if you wanted to leave it where you guys have three readings in session plus the uh, policy group work that's going on, or if you wanted to have two readings while you're at a board meeting plus the policy group. So I, it's just a discussion item for you to talk about.
And we're gonna talk now.
Thoughts, thoughts?
I, I don't mind doing the third read because the third time, we generally don't have discussion. It's just on the agenda and it's an additional chance for the public to weigh in. And we have had public weigh in even at that third reading.
On number three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to me, it's not that big a deal, but I could go either way. And we do, we have in plenty of circumstances, we've even adopted on a first read. Uh, so we're, we can be flexible.
Necessity.
Yes.
Yeah, if it was something important that we wanted to get in place quicker, we sure could. Yeah, we could have, we could avoid that time lapse if we needed to.
Well, I'll weigh in and just say, I agree with Jennifer's comments completely that I think having it on the agenda is just one more chance for people to actually notice it. If they.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, so we will leave it as is. That means we don't have to mess with our policy.
That's what I was gonna say too. If we did, we'd have to adjust our.
We would.
Policy to match it, so.
Yeah, I'm just, in my experience, I've never seen three readings, but doesn't mean it doesn't happen. So we can definitely stick with that, no problem.
Okay.
That's what people say about our two public comment times as well.
True that.
But we cannot take them away. Our community likes them.
Yeah.
We, yeah. Have seen, I don't know that we can ever give too much information.
Yeah, no, we're trying to give them more and not less. I agree with that.
Okay, uh, ready to go to policy first reads in. So the first one is the uh, non-discrimination policy, A C. Ken, you wanna?
Yeah, I'm trying to get down to it. Wow, it's really, it's really down there. There we go. And this is required policy by OSBA. Um, it was released in April twenty twenty four and it was last uh, updated on the twenty second or in twenty twenty two. Um, it's based on House Bill twenty-two eighty-one and it requires the school district to designate one or more civil rights coordinators for the district. Um, in our case, we happen to have very capable assistant superintendent who can take on that role. And so I would recommend um, that we put Tony's name in the blank spot. And uh, that's, I think that is the main change in the, in the um, policy, so.
Uh, just for a clarification for myself with nobody else. Uh, when we say required, it's required by the statutes and everything. OSBA in fact can't require us themselves to do anything, Ken.
That's a good question. I was thinking the same thing, Phil.
I, I mean.
Well, we have case.
Law, we have to have it, but it's not OSBA that's actually requiring that we have it.
Right. I think they're just saying that it's a, it's required by law. That's why they record, that's why they deem it what required.
Well, and the other thing is, is that in order for us to maintain our pace insurance, we have to have the required policies in place. So it technically is.
It is, it is. Maintain our insurance, then in that case it is, but.
Yes, there are condition precedent of getting renewals on our base insurance.
Yeah, or if we didn't adopt these policies, our um, like costs would go way up. It would be a much different ballgame.
Yeah, I'm not advocating, it's not. I was just noted that, you know, it's required, it's required by law and then not fringe OSBA, the insurers, we need it.
Yeah, and OSBA has a system in place, so they have required policy, they have highly recommended policy, they have optional policy. So this is categorized as required under their system.
Do you have any sense of how much staff time it actually takes like on an annual basis to, to I guess, serve in this role or complete the duties?
Of the civil rights?
Yeah, I, that's a great question. I've done this role in several districts. This, well, this will be my third district doing this specific role. And it really does vary. I've been in one district where uh, civil rights complaints um, were filed almost regularly. Um, I can tell you here so far in the time I've been here, I've had one complaint that I've been working on and they can be taken, some of them can be handled pretty informally. And the feds actually do have an informal process for many of these types of complaints. Um, but you can also have ones that will take you three to four months and even longer if there's like appeals that go on with them because at each of these steps, there's a lot of notice requirements are the key thing. So I, you know, i- i- if this works as it has for me in other districts, I would say you know, no more than maybe ten hours a month. But again, that's with the caveat that you can get one of these complaints that really hits you pretty hard. But they, one thing that is worthy of note, I think on this one, is that they have increased uh, the training requirements for the person who does this. They have uh, between September first and I think it's like February first, there will be six different trainings I'll have to attend. I think I've done three of them now. Uh, and they added, each time you, I've done this, they've added more and more as the laws change, right? So that's kind of where I think we'll see here in this district.
And I only have one complaint of this nature in my tenure as superintendent.
Who? Who's the uh, Title Nine Coordinator again? It's so, I'd say it makes sense that they're both wanting the same because they seem to be similar roles.
Sometimes in some districts you'll have, uh, they'll designate more than one person in these various roles. Uh, there are some districts that have had, you still have one coordinator, but they'll also designate separate investigators within each of these policy areas. Uh, but here I think with the size of our district, we're okay having one person designated in that role. And, and if we need to, there are some times where I think it's important for the board to know that uh, depending on the nature of the complaint and who might be involved, there may be times that I recommend and go out to get an independent investigator on a complaint. Usually that's when you have possible conflicts within a complaint between like, say, administration versus um, community members in that regard. So that's something to think about too though. But I think right now, I think this is reasonable to have just, you know, me as the coordinator and then I could work if I need to. At some point, if I feel we need to have more people trained as Title Nine uh, either investigators or um, dispute managers or whatnot, we can do that.
Um, I will say that uh, I also have had quite a bit of training in this and it's not, I, you know, it, it can be kind of time consuming. A lot of times we rely on the turn, the attorney to tell us whether we need a third party investigator. And we are happy to do that if that's the recommendation because that's probably the smart way to go.
On the policy itself, uh, there the is it, it's the title that we insert into the policy, isn't it? It's not the name. It'd be assistant superintendent.
Yeah, his name will go in. Yes, correct. This is just the, this is just the um, like sample.
Right. But, but would it be his name or title that goes in there? Because this reads the title and so that's what, the clarification I'm asking.
Yes, it would be assistant superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense, especially because.
Yeah. Well, it's not ten years, same, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just appreciate uh, Owen, your, your question. Then Anthony, your fault, because that came out of our uh, kind of original policy meeting as well. It's just the conversation around what is this cost and staff time? So I think that's kind of a very, at least for me, a real focus lens. Like a lot of these policies seem like they make, you know, absolute sense, but what is the financial impact?
I imagine it varies on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, yeah.
Any other discussion on A C? Okay, move on to uh, B B F, Board Member Standards Conduct.
It's a highly recommended policy from OSBA. Um, and it is uh, based on Senate Bill two thirty-one. And so it was to align state law with the agency's current process for receiving child abuse reporting through a centralized child abuse reporting system. So it's kind of, it kind of clarifies that process.
I noticed that uh, on number four on version two that we took out maintaining decorum and modeling civil discourse, was that purposeful or, and if so, why or was that a?
That's OSBA's deletion. So the second, the second mo, the, the two that follow it are two options. So one is version one and one is version two.
Right. And I'm, but I'm just asking in our policy that we presently have on the books, we have that in there. Is there a reason to take that out?
Because OSBA recommended to take it out, maybe?
Or was that part of ours and not a part of an original OSBA recommended?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
That would be my guess is that we put that in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in, in that word decorum.
Yeah, twenty-one I noticed was uh, last reviewed, okay.
I, I, I'm pretty sure that was deliberate that we put that one in there. I don't remember exactly, but the words um, ring a bell to me.
Okay. And I, I found it, I, I, I understand it. And then again, I find it interesting that uh, number twelve is in there under standards of conduct when actually that's almost more of a duty uh, of public figures, of board members, but uh, but I find it, but I'm not gonna argue that it shouldn't be there. I just found it kind of interesting that it's there under conduct.
Yeah, it is kind of interesting. I agree.
A practical note, I don't think the board has done its child abuse training this year. Have you guys done it at all?
Hasn't since I've been here.
Are you talking about for vector through the system?
Yes, cuz we did, I remember we couple, at least a couple of years ago, we had to do it. And I don't remember it recently.
I don't either.
Okay, we can send it back out to you.
Not that I'm asking for more work, but it's a kind of an important one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can get that out to you.
I think I am covered through my continuing to head through healthcare.
Yeah, and that's what I did too as a teacher. I've, I've already taken it. So I just turned in my certificate to um, Assistant Superintendent last time, but I don't think that's been a while, it's been a while since I've done that.
Yeah, so I agree with Phil. I don't, I would like to leave it the way it existing was, like as far as that number four on our current policy. And leave that decorum and modeling civil discourse. Because I think it's one of those things that we do really well as a board. And I like to see that stay. I don't think there's a reason just to remove it. Just because, I mean, if we could add it back to be existing with the changes that the existing board adds, makes sense to me. And I don't want to miss the, that change.
I, I concur on that.
Yep. So basically take version two and just add that to number four.
Yeah, yeah. So just, so we're gonna, are you taking notes, Debbie? So we're gonna adjust item four and we're gonna use version two because it's more similar to the one we already have. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I just reading over this, like the changes that they're making at twenty-two. And I'm always interested why they do this. Like, it's obviously it's covered there and we have to report, but um, I always like try to figure out the background. Do we know why? I mean, the language is already there that we are mandatory reporters and we have to, but.
Well, I think they took local law enforcement out so that you would, you know, if you were in a area where there were only state release, you would feel free to contact whoever you needed to law enforcement wise to help you. Um, and I think that they've just um, make a report. I mean, it doesn't need by telephone or otherwise. I mean, it could, it's just, it's redundant language. So they just want you to, they want to make sure you report it.
Yeah.
Most of the time it's by phone.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there are other ways to report.
Well, yeah, basically it was almost restricting it to be that way before.
Yes, right. Yeah, this way you could make it in writing, you know, if you had to fax it or something, you couldn't, I mean, you just, you're not supposed to make it third hand, so it's supposed to be directly from you. So you're never supposed to pass it to another person. Unless you were in an accident or something and, you know, couldn't, couldn't comply within twenty-four hours.
Hmm, so just, if, say this does pop up, it's a scenario, would we also, would it be? I mean, would we want to inform you as well? Because this has nothing to do with informing you in the loop, but I feel it'd be wise.
Yes, yes. All of our employees inform us as well when they report, yeah. So you would want to inform the superintendent. It's all confidential, doesn't.
I didn't see it in the policy, like, hey, we also need to inform the superintendent.
Yeah, it's good, it's good for us to know that in case, you know, I mean, it, it has ramifications inside buildings. Sometimes when they, when they show up, you know, it's disruptive sometimes, when they have to interview students. It can be if parents it just be, it can be a difficult situation for a building principal.
Josh, are you thinking you want to add language to that? Because I think this is capturing what's mandated by law, but you're talking about like what our standard practice would be.
That's kind of on a massive, right, for following policy. It'd be one of those things, we need to tell DHS or do we let Kim though then call DHS?
DHS first.
Yeah.
DHS is first, yeah, and then you would notify me.
And then keep in mind, your obligation is worldwide, so anytime you would encounter it wouldn't necessarily be a student of Silver Falls either.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah, I had to report a student at Walmart uh, that was being abused by a mother in the, in Newport, Oregon, when I was a teacher. So yes, correct.
So maybe we have to leave it out because it might not apply.
Right, right. Good, good point on. Any other discussion concerning B F F, B B F, excuse me. Okay. Now, B B F C, reporting suspected abusive child.
Yeah, this is the same language, just on a different policy. Correct. It's in a couple of different places.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, well, I thought it was weird.
It's consistent language.
Not the only thing that goes that way though.
Yeah, it's definitely not.
Well, they also added language for neglect as also being abuse.
Oh, yeah, they more thoroughly expect, founded on on.
These are just really uncomfortable for me.
They're what?
Very uncomfortable for me.
Just in general or is there?
Yeah, just they're very complicated.
They are.
Issues and.
Yeah.
You know, I see like when you, a mandatory report, you could also rip somebody's life apart by a misinterpretation or, so it's like, of course, I'm gonna follow the law, but the same time it's like oof.
Well, DHS may not always act on a report.
Right.
That is absolutely true. Yeah, sometimes you call them and they ask you some clarifying questions and if they're, like, sometimes if there's nothing in the file on that particular student, like, they say, okay, well, we're gonna put this in the file, but we're not gonna send anyone out. So it kind of depends on what it is, what it looks like. Um, if there's already, if there's already other abuse reported, then that makes them more likely to investigate and follow through. I, I, in my personal experience, I've called lots and lots of times.
And you can also call anonymously to see if your concern rises to the level of what they cover. Like I called before about a student who wasn't going to school. And that isn't under DHS's purview, which is interesting.
And obviously it's really severe. If, if they, if they withhold a stu, they can be cited for they, there are, there are things, but it has to be very severe. Um, it's neglect, they consider it, but they don't want to deal with it, basically.
So I didn't include the na, my name, student name or anything like that?
The, the question I have with this is, so it's like that they include the language on the new policy of like, of including neglect. And I'm like, well, how does that work for, as a board member, we're probably not gonna see that. That's a repetitive pattern of behavior in the classroom. The teachers like, they're not being fed or they haven't been cleaned. Like, how does that? I mean, is we, are we adding that now as well due by, do this new policy? It's not just abuse now and neglect too. So it's like, definition of neglect is a parent neglecting their kids or not neglecting their kids. That makes it complicated.
We would have the same policy in place for our board that we have for our teachers. And so we would expect our teachers to report neglect as well.
Do we do that? I mean, just out of, have we had those calls before? Like we're as a, a parent sees that, that the kid maybe not be abused, but isn't being neglected and we make those calls?
Yeah, we've made those calls before. I mean, I, I don't know about in Silver Falls right now, but um, in districts across the state, those calls are made daily. I mean, that's why sometimes administrators on the phone forty-five minutes with a teacher. The first time a teacher has to report, that's very stressful for them. So like as an administrator, a building administrator, sometimes you walk people through that on the first round. Yeah.
Well, some of your questions, I think, is, and you've had the training, I know, but um, I think that's one of the things that the training kind of you know, would, would really help us to understand what is reasonable cause to suspect mean and.
Right.
What circumstances we. That was why.
Hey, any uh, other comments? Suggestions or anything?
So are we saying that right now, Phil, that we're liking the changes that there for B B F C?
If we don't have anything we want to change different from it.
I don't see anything to change.
But yeah, we would, we would go with, right as of today, this reading, we're saying we're telling him, don't change, change anything from what you presented to us. Now, B C B A.
Yeah, this is an optional policy. Um, this is one we've talked about in the past before. So this is adding a student representative to the board. Um, and it has some really great clarifications about how we would do that if we wanted to um, move that way in the future. And so um, we are investigating an additional um, A R to go with this, maybe from North Clackamas or Salem Kaiser School District to kind of see what their policy is. I've not done that yet, but I, I will before you read it again. So this is just your.
We have an A R here, it's the next item.
Yeah, I'm just looking for an A R. An A R can, OSBA gives you kind of a sample A R that's kind of like generic, but it's good to look at other districts.
Okay, so this one.
I always do like a little comparison on the A R when I'm looking at them.
And I like the idea of, of you investigating what some other districts have. And, and one thing, and I think I've mentioned this before too, that uh, that we're really involving our high school staff, at least leadership staff in this process because, you know, what we, what we think we want to make something that they feel is workable and beneficial.
Yeah, we'll involve Alyssa Ogle on the process, but this could be, i- it's not just a leadership student, this could be any student. So you, you would pick up, yeah.
I was implying administrative.
General, yeah.
Leadership. Teachers and things like that in, in those positions, but.
Yeah, and Patrick Mulligan's actually on our policy team, so he chimed in on this. And I think the A R recommendation for North Clackamas was from Patrick. Uh, because they used that previously when he was there. Um, so yeah, I think that it's something we can, you know, get further information on for sure.
Given that we're already starting down the policy path here, this is our first reading with this policy. Um, I, I don't know if our board has really had a real chance to have any robust discussion on this topic to see if this is something we really want to incorporate as policy.
Yeah.
Um, I know we threw it out as an idea a couple of, several, actually several, I don't remember how many meetings ago, we threw it on for a potential item.
Yeah.
Uh, now it's incoming to us at policy, might it behoove us to have a discussion on this before we even want to spend, if, if the appetites of the board to yes or to no, I think we need to know that before we spend resources and time pursuing this policy.
I'm glad you brought that up because I'm literally fifty fifty on this, not really sure which way to go.
Okay.
And one of the reasons I have another question is like, how did, would this work with like the existing student government body that exists? So, uh, they have, you know, they, they vote for their student president, vice president and leadership like this, this now. This is a whole separate role from that. How do they intertwine together and work together? I just got, and then the additional people and admin time, I just have questions. How does it actually work?
Yeah, I think that's what the investigation for the A R was, to see how the districts were doing it. Um, I do know that there's an application process and an interview process, like it's pretty complicated. Um, you know, trying to find the right student or students to fulfill that role. Um, because it does provide a lot of voice, you know, for you and um, you know, they can give input on things, which I think is cool, but this was an optional policy that OSBA had in their update packet. And so that's why we're reviewing it. It wasn't, it's, it's just a coincidence because we'd already talked about it and it happened to be in their packet. Um, so it was in their summary for review.
And just, just because we have a policy, doesn't mean we have to.
No, you don't have to.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, absolutely optional.
And I'd like to add that. And I'd like to add that uh, Kim has on here uh. Add to future work session. In other words, it's going to be looked at. At other work sessions. It's not necessarily automatic to a second reading like some of these others.
Yeah.
By her notes down there.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that would be good before we move it along to another reading. Or even think about incorporating it because I just don't think we know the appetite of our current board on. Or this policy.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts is, you know, we. We do get student representatives, representatives um, uh, uh, reporting. Clubs, groups. There is a student government. There's that. And I guess I'm. I'm not against it, but I, but, but a question I got is like, what problem does this solve? And you know, it's just one more person, one more bit of paperwork. I'm just kind of wondering, does it, you know, what problem does it solve that isn't? I guess that would be, you know.
And I, and I kind of think the way you do, you know, I mean, we have.
I, I'm not really against it, but I'm like, you know, so anyway, just something to think about.
We have our A S B, you know, representatives that come.
Yeah.
Uh, ev- every board meeting, every official board meeting, that work session. Uh, we've had heard robust testimony from. Uh, F F A, from different clubs, from different student government groups.
We get individual.
Individual emails. We get, you know, we've had a great, I, I applaud our students because especially when things come up, we get a flood of.
Yep.
Emails on their opinions on topics, which I've always feel like we get a great um. Great, great um, piece of feedback from that. So I like you, Tom, I'm trying to figure out what my problem it solves and. We always have an open door for all of our students to, to, to do this. And again, some of it is. Like I said, I want them to go through student government and apply, you know, do things in leadership that way. Part of me also says, you know, I want kids to be kids. This is adult work and this isn't trying to exclude them in any way.
Yeah.
But I mean, some of the stuff that we have to deal with, like this is adult stuff. Um, I want them to be kids. And I just, I just, you know. Not that we're high and mighty elected officials, but look, we're adults, we're elected officials. There's a process for it. I want kids to be kids. And, and so, you know, I'm a little bit hesitant with this one.
Yeah, the kids unfortunately are very adult like. You know, and I, I think it, I, I don't think there's any problem here to solve with it. I think that. Mainly what it does is it lends their student voice to your process. So an example would be like, if you were talking about dress code, right? If we were going to update our really antiquated dress code policy that has no A R. Um, you know, they might have some input on that. So I mean, at times, yeah, probably a lot of times they'd be, you know, snooze fest. This is not. Pertinent to us, but sometimes there would be something that's important that they would want to weigh in on. And you know, they might do that anyway. It sounds like they are comfortable. In that type of, you know, uh, testimony situation, so.
I'm kind of split on kind of what Aaron and Tom were talking about, but then also that student voice, like you may not solve a problem, but it's a voice that we don't necessarily hear. Consistently like we're in different student groups, but um. You know, I think having a seat at the table, because every decision that we actually make here probably has a larger impact on it more directly than it does even us as board members. So. Um, I'm really kind of like split fifty fifty right now in the middle. Um. Yeah, I, I think in, in theory, it sounds like a. Kind of a good idea, but then also like, what is the actual tangible measurable benefit?
Yeah.
Um, and maybe you can't really actually quantify that.
I probably could quantify it by reaching out to other superintendents who are doing that. I probably could get some qualitative data for you about. Like how it works and what they feel the benefit is and what they feel the downside is. Um. The students on this, in this type of role, they don't vote. So you know, you're still the voting body and. Um, it's still your decision, but they, they, if you were having a discussion like this, they certainly could chime in.
And they, and one, it's a, those other avenues that we've hear from them. This is a. This is a two-way conversation when they are.
Hmm.
Uh, at the board table, it's a two-way conversation, which is a whole lot different than giving a report.
Correct.
And. And uh, I, I think it would be important to get that. Feedback from places that do have it and, and how that's worked. And that's again, comes back to our own situation even. As far as interest. Maybe there's not an interest.
Yeah. There might not be.
Uh, at our, at our high school. But if there is, then I think we should. We should at least give it credence to take a look at it. Doesn't mean we necessarily have to do it, but I think take a look at it.
Sure.
And anytime we can open up, uh. May not fix problems, but anyway, we can, anytime we can open up a two-way communication. With uh, another avenue to our community. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
My, my thoughts on this, I'm kind of fifty fifty because I can, I can argue both sides. I see giving the kids an opportunity to serve. Maybe this is. Maybe they want to get into public service as a career and then this fast tracks them on a resume or. Um, maybe they learn a lot. And uh, choose not to go down that route because they don't like it. I, I always want to give kids opportunities. To serve where they want to. I also see the complexities of adding it because it does say they can make motions, which may be acted on. Which will throw me for a loop at times. Um, also, I almost feel like. Kind as a board, we'd be kind of advisors of some sort. And I'm not really feel like I'm qualified, you know, I'd be leaning on you guys quite a bit in the board chair, vice chair, to make sure that we're following things correctly. Um, and then the other thing about having a policy that we don't use, I'm never really a big fan of that. Like, so say we have this policy, but we're not following it by, unless the verbiage is really clear that. We could choose to do this or not do that. For me, that's really akin to. Having a reserve fund balance that we're not meeting as a policy that we're not following it.
Hmm.
So I don't like to have policies on our books that were actually not just. Using correctly. So this, I'm, I could see both sides. It really comes down to, I think where Derek was going earlier, like, do we have the time? Do we have the money and the focus? To do this. And if the answer is like, it's not that big of a deal, then I could be swayed that way. So.
And you can table it till, you could table it till next spring too, and then talk about it again for next school year if you wanted to. You certainly wouldn't add it mid-school year. That would be kind of odd anyway, so.
Uh, and that may be the way to go. Like we look at everything would be required just to get it up and running, you know, selection, timeline, process, applications.
It's a process.
Kind of one more thing that we'd be putting on to. An already challenging school year. So that also gives me pause for maybe this school year, but.
Heck, well, we'll pause this one for a bit. I think to reflect that in the notes.
But I guess that's my, that's my, always been my biggest concern. I mean, I, I love the idea of student voice, but there are other ways to like. I've seen examples of student voice where um, it was more administrator interacting with kids on. Operational types of things, not necessarily policy level things. And so it's a little bit closer to the student experience and. I love that idea um, too. But again, it, what Derek said, it's like, is this the, the moment?
Yeah. Yeah, I just had a student in my office, the A S B president the other day, and we were discussing like. The biggest change in the high school was moving off the block schedule. And she's like, how do we get back on the block kilos size? That's expensive. But let me ask my money boss. I says, I, then I had to explain that operational detail of creating a, a, a very complicated high school schedule versus seven period versus block. Seven period is much more straightforward. And cheaper, way cheaper. So we, yes, operational discussion.
Yeah, it's just closer to their experience. And I think sometimes people perceive that that's what we do too, but that's not what we do.
No, it's not. Correct.
Any more discussion on either of those concerning student representation? Sounds like. But clear direction.
Yeah, yeah, we're good over here.
Okay.
I am anyway, you get to.
Okay, C B superintendent.
I gotta get down there. Sorry.
Like how they.
How they recommended?
I just like that they added on there, they, they put a little lower. Length bottom saying that superintendent also includes interim. So that was a good little addition because that really applies to us right now too. So.
Right.
I like that language change.
And I didn't have any. rotations of anything that. Fine with the revision.
Oh, just send the footnote.
Anybody else have any? Comment, concern, change, no change, anything like that? Okay.
Well, I feel like this one definitely came out of Newbird. Because that line there said, the board not direct to take any action at conflicts with local, state and federal law.
Yes, and that's based on uh, state law, you know.
I mean, I don't. I guess I struggle with this policy stuff because it's like, we're doing it because you have to be like, well, of course I would never ask you to break the law, you know, but. I guess you have to put that down, right?
People have, yep, in the past asked us to break the law.
Yep.
Yeah, I've had that happen to me. When I was not superintendent, I was a director of teaching and learning during COVID.
Yep, yeah, we had this. The whole bunch of people.
And I said, I will, yeah, I will not lose my license. So I, I.
Yeah.
I'm not a law breaker. Sorry.
Redirect you to lose your license.
Yeah. Not doing that. Yeah.
Okay. So we can move on. C B G. Which has to do with evaluation.
Oh gosh, we've already talked a lot about this.
We have. I, I uh, I didn't have anything other than just a observation that I. Thought maybe you could shed, shed some light on, might have some idea. In that first paragraph.
Yep.
Why do have so many of the policies come out and had, and so many districts have? Where it says administrative job description instead of having superintendent's job description, like we're making ours. Why don't they have that normally? Do they, do a lot of districts not have a separate job description for their superintendent?
Well, the superintendent usually has not only a separate job description, but an entirely different contract and an entirely different role than a traditional administrator. Yeah, I mean. Our work is very different from that of a building administrator. I mean, there are some similarities and some overlaps and um, but. There's a lot of advocacy, advocacy, state work. Funding, you know, like meetings to impact. Policy and law and uh, budget for this whole state. Like we, we do really interesting things.
I applaud that it's changed this way, but I just do not understand why there's so many that don't have that. Of course, we didn't before either.
Yeah.
Don't have that in.
Yeah.
So.
So I, it's actually, so these uh, these cover sheets. For the policies are like really cool.
Yeah.
There is something here like the district responsibility section where it says. Please take time to review the language and all the contracts. And that's not on us. I mean, that's on. On you guys to make sure. I mean, it says like, that's the district responsibility. I'm assuming. Did all the language in our contracts is good with this policy, but. I mean, that seems like a lot of work.
It would be our responsibility, the seven of us to review the superintendent's contract.
Right, but the next one goes to administrators too.
Yes, yeah, that's not our business.
That's our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I don't, looking at this, we actually are existing policy. Are they saying that it's not? Compliant with the way we have it worded, because we actually have times and dates associated with your evaluation, that the recommended policy doesn't.
Yeah, those are, those are an add-on. You know, they're an, an additional feature to, and that is uh, kind of like practice in the state that March fifteenth deadline is, is that standard practice and that actually is state law for. Teachers and other administrators. So you know, we give notice to people um, by March fifteenth, well, probably before March fifteenth. Um. If they're not going to be retained in the district for the following year. Uh, so if you, you know, if you were going to not retain a, a probationary employee, that is your deadline. And so that's kind of why the superintendent timeline follows that as well.
So is our existing policy not good enough when we have to do the new recommended language?
So anytime you have a.
Before.
I can give you an example. Yeah, there, there is. Um, yeah, we, I did check my own contract. I think it's okay.
Okay, so are we fine with not having dates then? Cause I kind of like them. Saying by this date on this meeting, we're gonna do this.
The date is in my contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
Contract.
Yeah.
But not in the policy.
Yeah, because that would be too restricting.
Right.
As, as long as, if, if we have what's in state law, that's, that's.
See, we arbitrarily moved one of the dates in the contract.
Yeah.
It's the big situation. And, and if we had it in the date. In the policy, then we'd be going against policy.
Correct.
This is like the bare minimum and then ours is like a step. Dates and more description. I mean, yours, yours might be a mountain of actually instead of a step. I mean, it's. It was a pretty thorough, when Derek went through it, it's very thorough evaluation process and timeline and all that. Yeah, I think you're fine.
We always want to remember in theory. Policy is. The guidelines of what's supposed to happen. Then you have the A Rs and the contracts and everything else that.
Yeah, the airs and the contracts are how we, yes, those are how we make those things happen. Correct.
So if you get too restrictive in policies, you kind of tie your hands in those other areas.
Correct. Yeah.
Good point. Okay. Need more on evaluation and superintendent? Okay, evaluation of administrators. C C G.
I think we.
Now.
Kind of Josh, Josh, I have the same question, just the review of the contract language, just to make sure there's no conflicts, but.
Yeah, I actually um. So we do, we do a formal evaluation each year. And it's. Yeah, yeah. Yep, those are all correct.
I noticed basically, basic differences that uh, from the O S double A is a, a. wording of must in there on the evaluation, that sort of thing.
Yeah. And they.
I'm sitting here thinking, why wouldn't you?
Right. Yeah, you should. Yeah.
Then there, there is a supporting doc, document if people want to take a deeper dive, the. On the evaluation administrators, I was just curious because it, you know, the one through six part was obviously pretty general. So I was kind of curious and so. Um, the reference that they have is that footnote. One, it goes into all the kind of deeper, if anybody's interested in the. Additional, just what each of the standards means.
Yeah, this is, this is something that Tony, Tony actually worked on. You want to talk about it?
Yes, I see that there's a smile pride there, so.
They changed the standards a few years back and I'll let, I'll let him talk about it.
So I'm probably looking at your work.
I actually shared in the, um, yeah, well, in full disclosure for you all to know, I mean, I shared in the policy group that um. Personally, I have a concern with. This policy, not because as it's written, it's that it's not meeting what current uh, state board of education. Because, but what the state board of education has done is they still have rules, which are these old um, leadership consortium standards. Right, that are way back from like two thousand eleven.
Yeah, I started in Abbott.
And in twenty eighteen, when I became executive director at T S P C, the first thing I did was ask to get the administrator standards updated. Uh, because administrator standards at T S P C create what the scope and the purpose of the licensure is, right?
Hmm.
Uh, we did that according to the twenty eighteen version, uh, draft of what they call the P S L standards. And we updated it in Oregon to be a little bit more specific to um. What we feel were some of the important things happening in Oregon. Uh, T S P C adopted the standards and then we pushed them over to the state board of Ed. Because the state board of Ed then takes the standards and then they put them, because that what Kim has to certify when she does her division twenty-two is that we have administrators saying all these different things in place, right? Um. And unfortunately, the state board of Ed has, even after a few years of asking, the state board of Ed is still not aligned. The standards to what T S P C's updated standards were. So this is actually, it does meet. The policies does meet what the current state board of Ed standards are, but my concern is that, is these standards are woefully. Behind the times.
They're outdated.
From what, from what I, I believe was very important for current administrators. Plus the way we license the administrators has changed. So we can, we can expect more of our principles. And, and in many ways we should for the sake of our kids, right? And the new standards would have reflected that a little bit better.
And the complexity of their. And the complexity of their job is different than it used to be. There's there's parts of it that are much more difficult than when I started as.
So these are good. These are good according to the current law, but I will tell you that the second the state board. Were to, which I'll probably go to one of their next several meetings and remind them, why didn't they? Haven't they done this? Um, this i- if the day comes, they adopt those new ones, I'll probably ask him to bring an updated version to that has. Those new standards uh so that way we can also align our administrative evaluation tools to these standards.
Yeah, we would have to adjust our system to because our system is based on what's in this policy right now.
But that's too bad, but it's.
Tony, is there has there been? You not that far removed from it. Has there been any efforts? To reconceal the consile these. Differences on a level I what I'm getting back back in the. In the early nineties, I'm ashamed to say. I was on a statewide committee that they brought in. Board of Education teachers practices and they brought in. Uh, all the universities and colleges also that. Certified them and then they had some of us, there was like from around the state, there was four of us. Teachers on it and there was a couple of administrators from around the state and tried to get everybody in the room to. Sort all that out and make it so that everybody was doing the same thing. Do they even try to do anything like that anymore?
Uh, they've they've tried with a lot of that work and uh when I took on that work, they had tried for several years. They have this group of like twenty six people that were meeting to talk about these standards. And uh unfortunately, they were having meetings just to set meetings.
Yes.
When you're actually going to develop hard language on anything.
Yeah.
You start having more than about ten people or so in a room.
Right.
You're gonna get bogged down in procedural steps, right? That was a big challenge, but to the bigger question. That is one of the challenges, I will say, of having a state and there's only about a dozen states left. Where the licensing board is an independent agency from the Department of Ed. Um, so I'll whenever my agency would do something, we would have to. Then go back and negotiate again with the Department of Ed to say, okay, our responsibility is licensure standards. And what the scope of licensure should be, so let's talk about now you. So instead of having just one commissioner board. Adopt things. Now you got T S P C doing something that has to roll over to the Department of Ed and then when the Department of Ed gets it. They have to go through their own process of getting community feedback. And then going through the rulemaking process, which is where this piece has stalled.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, so that's that. That's a little bit of that history there. There was um. A measure uh that was in the last long legislative session to look at the possibility of merging the agencies. Um. There was a lot of pushback against merging, but that doesn't mean it won't come up again.
Yeah.
Well, it actually did. It came up during the early literacy bill discussion, so I was on the Rules Committee for the Early Literacy Bill. And they were talking about making sure teachers were uh trained in the science of reading and how we would prove that. And I said. You have to back up a little bit. I said. Your colleges were not training them that way. And I said, so you need to talk to the heck because the there they were not, I mean, there's only a few colleges in the state of Oregon that are actually training teachers in the science of reading. Eastern Oregon, the universities, one, U V O's another. And so like I said, how are you going to require teachers that have been in the classroom for a while? To prove that when there's nowhere for them to even take that instruction. They didn't have it in their teacher program. I said, so I said, that's that's an unfair rule to make for teachers in this. And so we went round and round and round and round. And then the other thing that was problematic was T S P C requires. If you wanted to be a reading intervention specialist, you have to have a reading endorsement. Well, if you go and get a reading endorsement in the current system, it's not based on the science of reading unless you take it at E O U. And so then there was this big thing about. Well, we can't even get licensed reading specialists that are in the science. It's a it's just a rouse nest kind of, you know, I mean, it was just this big. Discussion about how we manage that. And I think it's part of what Tony is alluding to is that these. These things do not communicate sometimes together because they are different entities. And so if they were, you know, T S P C was part of O D E if. If the Early Childhood Department was part of O D E and I've told that to Charlene Williams Williamson, the director of O D E and I'm like, hey. This is something um that. We are encountering all the time, like these licensing challenges and.
So the one one of the benefits of having this the separate agencies was though is that T S P C could act respond. A lot more quickly than O D E could just it it's just a given size of bureaucracy, right?
Right.
T S P C was a small agent, so when we had COVID. A lot of the things that allowed and and I will make a plug for my commission and and the employees there is that we were able to T S P C to implement. Implement temporary rules and changes within within a day and a half of the governor's order. I had already, because I could on my own. Implement changes to rules where O D E and Heck and all those other ad agencies took several months just to get temporary things going in place, right? So there's some benefit to that nimbleness, uh but the one benefit is is Kim mentioned because there were a lot of discussions. It was decided with the science of reading piece that the first set of standards. That were decided to go back and revise to address the science of reading were the preparation standards. Right? Because you there are those two standards. There's the preparation standards and there's a scope of practice standards, right? Which we would expect for all the teachers. And Kim is right. I mean, if you're going to get teachers to hold to this, you really need to start with how we're preparing people, right? Plus, by doing that first, you always have to just the way rules work is you have to allow those prep programs two to three years. To really then implement what those new standards are. So i- it's another good reason to really start with that.
Yeah.
So those standards were done and they were adopted by T S P C. In the spring and now they're or late spring and now they're working to get the licensing standards updated.
Right, but we worked on that all year last year. So that I mean that when he's talking about all those meetings, it was meeting after meeting after meeting trying to. You know, put a practical lens on it about how difficult some of these things are to implement in a school district, especially the one. Uh, our size, so.
I'm sorry, I kind of got a sidetracked here, but but I but I was just. Curious if if things had gotten better in thirty years or not, and it sounds like not appreciably so as far.
Well, it is important to understand, of course, you know, what are what we collectively are expecting of our educators, right? And how how are we confident as a group that? We have educators that are well trained in that we're holding because board members all you all have a very strong voice.
Yeah.
You know, uh that you could go to the legislature when they're talking about these things. And mention, you know, hey, we're the ones that are at the ground level making this stuff happen.
Mm hmm.
So, you know, let's not put up and let's not accept the standard bureaucratic delay or the legislative delay in getting things done. Right?
Yeah.
So that's why I feel comfortable sharing this with you so you know. This policy is good, but it's not what I would call settled.
Right, so.
Perfect, yeah.
You know, I'm glad Derek. Looked a little deeper because it just put me off some stuff here and. I'm very uncomfortable. We're going to be following this policy as like evaluating our administrators. For the it was like it literally says. And administrators evaluation uses following educational leadership standards. And they're looking at the standards like number five and number six, I'm going to them. Number five, promote social justice and ensure that integral student needs. Um, social political context. And one of the same influencing the larger political, social, economic, like I don't want my teachers. To be involved in influencing. Political stuff or promotion of certain. Thing I'm like, I don't want that to be how they're graded in the classroom. Um, so I'm very uncomfortable if this is the standards we're holding them to.
Well, I I think if you think about that in in a different way, Josh, it's not that there. It's not that they're promoting one or the other within a classroom or or that they're promoting any type of discourse around that. But they understand how to navigate different community. Members and different families so that they can help respond to both people so that. They understand that in a socio-political context as an administrator, you have to come into the middle. I've talked to you a lot about being in the middle. And not being polarized to the right or polarized to the left. And so having a having a good socio-political context. It makes you a successful administrator because what you do is you're thoughtful and you listen to all people and their opinions. And I don't think you're pushing one agenda or the other, but you're allowing people the freedom to express their own beliefs. And you embrace that.
I think exactly what you're saying is perfect in how it should be. This document does not say that. It says promote. And so it's like, it's not, that's not being in the middle. That's push. Do it this way. And that makes me very uncomfortable. Like I want all our teachers to be in the middle and not feel like if we're going to be holding to the standards of which this is what we're supposed to be grading them on. I guess this is an interpretation of what promote means.
Yeah.
I want to grade them and like that's kind of like, oh, I just don't like it.
Josh, I don't see promote. Where what line are you on?
It's in the document into their sub uh into the footnote. So it's the Educational Leadership Constituent Council based on Oregon dot gov, the thing that Derek referenced at the beginning. So there's the six standards and then this is where they define those standards.
But I believe that standard is still in the new set. So I know I when we when we look at the new standards, that is going to still be part of those.
But they are reworded.
They are different differently, but they that is still part of that's. That parameter. I mean, you wouldn't want a superintendent that can't navigate the socio-political context of our world right now.
Completely understand.
You don't want an administrator that can't navigate it either. I don't, I mean, it would be.
One, and it's. It's interpretation, it's.
Correct.
From promoting in the sense of understanding how it works, not. It's. Uh, not how to think, it's think and look and how to put it, not but not. The how the. The what.
That might be a good future revision. Well, I don't think there's a revision that could be made because it says that we're supposed to use this. To evaluate our administrators. It's not like we have an option.
Yeah, this is required policy for those.
This is still good, State Board of Ed requirements and they are therefore part of what Kim has to sign off on. As part of assurances.
Yeah.
With the state.
Evaluation cycle part.
Is it? I mean, this is my last little take on this. This is literally almost feels like it flies in the face of that amazing email you sent Kim to the school district. Which I'm very appreciative of reminding that we're all. Just people kind of clear this out, need to be kind. We need to be decent in our differences. And so when I see stuff that says kind of like, man, this is not it's. I love the way you sent out the email. I don't like this.
Well, the way I sent out the email is what I really feel.
Good.
And I will say that, I mean, we spend a whole, there's an entire class on this for administrators. So I mean, it's it is a real thing um in their, you know, in their. Educational track to become an administrator. Um, and it's probably the most important. If I didn't know how to do that, I would be a failure for you. I would not be good at this. So. Whether. How how we implement it, that that is part of our district leadership and how we manage these things and how we. How we make, you know, certain we're listening to all populations and, you know, we're taking in their needs. So, you know, like. What if when we we when we adopt a new health curriculum, which we there are only three choices, so it's not going to be too hard. Uh, you know, there's a lesson on sex ed, so we we advertise when we're going to teach that. We talk about it. And we we give parents the skills and the and a toolkit to take home and teach that at home if they're not comfortable having their student take it in the classroom. We provide materials for them, you know, here you if you'd rather teach this at home, you can. And we will provide an alternate activity for your students. So just really trying to be mindful about how we. How we serve our entire population. And make sure that everyone feels good about coming to school, that everyone feels welcome and that we have a system that fits everybody. And so whether, you know, if if you're a parent that doesn't want that taught to your student. Then we have a plan for you and that's how other districts are doing it around us. And so trying to. You know, make sure that we're mindful of those things and and aware and not, you know, we don't try and push some. Something on somebody that they're not comfortable with. Um, so I think that. I think that can go either direction. I don't think I think I think public education has gotten a bad rap. For indoctrinating students and all we're really trying to do is love up on students and teach them the best way we know possible and, you know. Tony and I were on several buildings today and, you know, that's not what we see when we're in classrooms. And so. I think, you know, if if I would encourage you to come into a building so that you can. And and be in there so that you can see that that's not what our administrators.
I I don't think they are, and I think everything you said is true, but the way they word this stuff, it does give the perception of indoctrination. It's not coming from us, it's coming down upon us. And it's just, it it does muddy the water because you can literally read this and go. You know, versus the way you word things, which is much better. So.
Yeah, I actually I actually have talked to O D E about that on several occasions about making this more. Where it's, you know, where it fits more people, it's not.
In the middle.
Yeah, more middle centric, yes.
Right.
Don't use language that might be polarizing. Yeah, right, yeah, because there's no need to really.
All right.
Correct.
Anything else on uh C C G? Okay. B J C bidding requirements. Yay.
Yeah, so this is a a new version, highly recommended. Kim, do you want to talk about this one at all?
Absolutely. So there's a recommendation that we uh delete um our existing current versions of D J C and the A R. Um, D J C A, D J C A A R. Um, there was a uh House Bill ten forty seven passed uh in two thousand twenty three. That as of January one of two thousand twenty four, it increased uh the. Financial thresholds for what uh qualified as a small procurement. Intermediate uh regular emergency kind of updated the language um as well as. Um, you know, a ten thousand dollar threshold for a small procurement. Unfortunately, in these days, ten thousand dollars is not uh very much sadly. Um, so this uh this uh suggested policy uh updates are uh the current proposed policies. To account for those increased thresholds as well as really makes that uh policy much more. Um, I would say user friendly and certainly much cleaner. Uh, includes actually some uh definitions uh as well. Uh, defining such as the construction manager, general contractor, C M G C. Um, uh details that we just brought to you, brought to you last uh session. So. Uh, again, this is a uh, you know, definitely uh highly recommended uh that we update to these new pieces, so.
For uh Kim Dow, this was one that um under that first kind of policy group meeting, we definitely wanted you to take a look at um any. Kind of impacts that you see with the slight changes.
I certainly had had no concerns and I actually felt like this actually was a a great service to not only our board but our public in clarifying. Uh, what was exempt from maybe a competitive bid, what qualifies as an emergency. Uh, procurement, uh those sorts of things, you know, that if we have a. Uh, complete disaster, we we can't wait for three bids, we we need to take care of our buildings right away. Uh, so. Um, also, you know, I, while it does align with state policy or excuse me, current current procurement law. You know, um, the biggest piece I think we want to take away is that we're continuing to communicate with the board and our transparency of. Of sharing, you know, uh larger purchases with you. Maybe it doesn't even meet the threshold of requiring. Free bids, but it is best practice for our taxpayer dollars to get three bids, to get. Uh, to to follow, you know, as many procurement options as we can. We look at um, uh, you know, we uh. Uh, there's procurement uh agreements in place, purchasing agreements in place that. Uh, districts all come together and they they get bulk pricing, if you will, with with vendors or with uh materials, so. Uh, certainly no concerns from from my side at all.
And you just saw this in action last board meeting when we had the three bits for the survey and that. That one higher bid was for the same exact service, so you can see the variance. One was sixty two. Um, seventy two hundred, sixty five hundred and the other was twenty something thousand. Yeah, it was it was a large difference and that was exactly the same survey.
Yeah, so in in general, what this does is a a small procurement is increased from ten thousand to twenty five thousand. Um, the intermediate procurements, which were at. Twenty five, I believe, go to a hundred thousand. Uh, excuse me, that's a regular procurement. The intermediate procurement uh is the the hundred thousand. So there's there's these different thresholds now as we're kind of getting into place and, you know, we're. You know, we're uh, we we knew this went into effect in January, however, because our board policy still had the lower thresholds. We've been. Um, operating under that uh, as well, so.
Any? Questions, discussion?
I'm going to trust on this one.
Yeah. My law, my law degree expires. But. It uh, well, we're. In in implementing this one, we'd be going with uh. Pretty much. Down the lines.
I did some background on it as well, and it said everything that Kim did of the importance that it needed to be updated basically for. Uh, the 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 prices that they had listed or the amounts were just so low that. It uh, just didn't make sense anymore.
Okay. And then the A R that accompanies it.
Yes, our current D J C A R that I believe is eighteen pages. Uh, when I saw the new proposed one, I was so happy because it covers all eighteen, whatever it is. Pages in a much more succinct uh, explanation, so. Uh, very pleased with what they've what they've proposed. It. Clear and to the point and covers all the same information.
Well, and that's what's important is that, you know. The understanding of it. And answer with us all our policies if we have them following. That's bottom line.
Yes. Yeah, down to six pages.
Yeah.
So a big difference.
Big difference and.
It's almost Cliff Notes.
Yeah.
Those even exist anymore.
I do love it.
Really date myself now. Okay. A more on that. Okay. Uh, we, since we do have a action item, uh. We normally don't have public comment at the workshops, but we will entertain the. Public comment at this time limited to our discussion items or action items. We have no one present. Do we have anyone online?
We do have one person joining us tonight, but I do not see a hand raised at this time. If you want to give just a moment.
Yeah.
Make sure there's not a change of heart.
Yeah.
But uh. If anyone with online would like to speak, please raise your hand. It appears we're good.
Okay. Then moving on to our. Our action item, uh.
I. I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready. Uh, here. I would be if I had the uh. Had it up here on my screen, motion, just a second.
I did make uh, Tom's suggested change to it and.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So it's already already got it. I might be able to get it off the printer. You already did it? No, I'm supposed to take that out.
You ready to have that?
No. It was at the bottom.
Well, that's not needed for the motion anyway.
No, it's not.
That bottom part. So uh. But I don't have the right screen here for having a motion, so I can reread it.
No, it's just it was just this down.
Yeah, it's got the resolution number.
Yeah, the motion.
It is in the city of Silverton, so we can leave it. It was on ivory printed at work.
I think that's what we need. I think you can just make the motion. It's here.
Here it is. I see it. Okay, okay.
So I moved.
Go ahead.
I moved to approve resolution number ten dash twenty eight dash two thousand twenty four. Approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement. For certain real property located within Silver Falls School District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. To approve resolution. Ten dash twenty eight dash two zero. Twenty four approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sales agreement for certain real property located within the Silver Falls School District. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed nay? Pass me yours. And we are a.